Call over the meeting upset you were saying this is the budget. Works out. At five thirty. Candace.
Dear heaven and father, we thank you for allowing us to be here tonight. We ask that you guide us and lead us to make the right decisions in the best interest of our community and citizens of Vernon. Keep those with COVID safe and help others not to get it. And Jesus knows right in the middle.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and every justice for all.
Tracy had me print out the budget summary for y'all, the news one that she made. And she also had to give you the, um, one of the job descriptions and copy of them for y'all. So that's all I have to.
This is each employee's job. So if you'll notice on the budget, I mean, this is the first time I've seen it too because Tracy was sent out, but, um, we're zeroed out. That's just because I asked her to take the funds that are available to get us to a balanced budget because we have to by state law have a balance budget in September on file with the state. Um, and we can work on the budget. I mean, work on the things that we're gonna need to do as far as not being in the hole next year. But we've got to have a balanced budget to move forward. And I don't want to look like federal government and be shutting down and all that stuff, so.
Does anybody see that exact amount? That was added.
Well, we don't have the one. I don't have the one from last week.
That's what I'm saying. I was wondering if anybody saw it.
Oh, she's got one right here.
I think. No, that's.
We just want to look at the bottom line.
Sixty-one thousand something last week.
Yeah, last week, but she also said that it was gonna change.
Cause she took the thirty percent out.
So what you're saying Candace, we had to take sixty-one thousand dollars off to make the budget.
I believe it's the sixty-five, four, thirteen.
Yes.
Or sixty something. It might've been sixty-two something I guess. We had to, uh, put in the budget to make it.
Right. Have to balance.
To make it balanced, but we don't want to go into next year.
So us as a council, so budget balanced last year. Each year has to balance for the state.
Right. The thing is last year it wasn't actually balanced. It was just balanced on paper because we didn't know.
But we was in hole.
Well, right.
Okay.
Yeah. So we're just gonna keep going farther if we don't figure out how to.
Yeah.
Get out of it now.
First word proposed wrong.
Yeah.
For this budget, a hundred and forty-one thousand out.
So it's six, say from last, the last printout that we had, we were sixty-one thousand, three hundred and forty-three dollars and sixty-two cents out. I know that that actually raised up some more because she said the three percent off of water and sewer. Um, not, not raising water and sewer bills. Good. I get dizzy going back. I got used to this. One thing that can be done, um, this is showing us budget, but one thing, there's some things that can be done to help us so that we don't go into next year because we don't have this money next year. Uh, franchise fee. We've got a utility tax. Um, those are two things that can be looked at to increase the revenue. Um, we're spending on our parks and rec, and when we're gonna do that for our kids, but we need to be bringing in, not putting out forty thousand dollars that's not coming back at all.
No, we're not even bringing in. We only rec should at least bring in and bring in a profit home.
Because for, I mean, for years, we had the biggest football program around for young kids. Hundreds of kids, literally. There would be over a hundred kids. So we've got to do something about that. And Walsall's even starting soccer. I mean, Walsall is so much smaller than us and they're starting soccer.
The money that we got can be utilized to build a good program, but right now it seems like we're just thin and there's nothing coming back.
And I might be wrong and I won't speak out of turn, but I checked our recreation director's contracts coming up. Um, we do have a couple, a couple, uh, looking at recreation directors, I wish I knew, I'm told that does a lot of work with the football program.
Now.
They, uh, they interested in the contract. Uh, and I know y'all called community, all of us have called community and, and, and a lot of it's run around, I think, but part of it's our fault too, you know, but he, he's got a lawnmower. We give him a lawnmower. Uh, it stays at the end of building if we enclose down at the sports place, but y'all heard him the other night. He probably is taking our trailer and hauling it from the sports place to the, uh, shady grass.
That's a war.
That's not.
Well, but here's the thing, sports place still at night. There's a lawnmower there. It ain't got to take the trailer.
I pulled the seat. Y'all don't want to use that one.
Well, it's a weedy.
I'm gonna be perfectly honest. I'm gonna be perfectly honest. Y'all, I mean, the lawnmower's twenty-two years old.
It is.
Yeah, I mean, give me a break.
Okay.
I mean, I'm not taking up for nobody, but the thing is, is you can't take equipment like that and try to take care of a, a baseball field or a football field or something like that.
I understand that, but when he took on the position, he kept it in his contract. And in the contract.
But his contract now doesn't say that.
Yeah, it does because it was never an open sign. But that's not the point. The point is.
Two months ago, what was that contract? To reinstate what?
Add concessions to it.
That was.
Yeah. Add it back.
It was the same contract that we've given. My, I'm not against it. Here's my point. When, when we did this, it was, we were in a mess. We jumped out of one mess into another mess and it's robbed on a mess. But the issue with equipment, my concern and I expressed it to the M P himself the other night, using the equipment issue as an excuse isn't cutting it because he was going to have his own equipment to start with in his contract. The city turned around and said, hey, we're gonna give you a lawnmower. We're gonna help. We're gonna do whatever we can do. But now all of a sudden, nothing's being done. Nothing's even being weeded. So I understand water's on the ground. I had contracts that I had to keep where I mowed grass and I've managed to get it mowed and part of it on the water. All I'm saying is there has not been any catch that I've seen since I talked to him. He actually ducked me the other day and thanked me.
How you mowing any since this week? I know it's raining.
It's weedy in your face.
You have been having weeding. At the sports flags or where?
We put the sports flags on and we put the shady grass on.
And you did that this past week?
It'll be done by this weekend. The next three days are all dry.
We, we might, we might get a load of sand to fix where the guys from that there fixed up that trench. Those ruts out there and near them, they didn't, in that field out there. He can't cut that.
I've seen them. Um, again, since we're on our ship, we started, we're on the budget and we'll get back to Tim to, uh, on the recreation department. I apologize that the council wouldn't know. I, you can see the ruts from the highway, so I know what they caused by the trailers. Uh, it went, when they went driving, it went the whole time, but I know they have, you know, back, like I told you the other night, the council don't know until you tell. You know, if you've got a twenty-three-year-old lawnmower, I didn't know it was that old. I know we give you a lawnmower, but if it don't work, you have to say something to us. Or you're gonna get in deep trouble with the council. As simple as that, you know, because we get feedback from the citizens here in Vernon and everybody else. Hey, what's wrong? You know, because it's a small community. They know, you know, what, what the city folks out for the recreation park. But if you don't come back and, and, uh, give a report, it's just like anybody else. Jason don't give his report on something that's fixing to tear down or any of these parks. City's gonna run in trouble. Simple as that.
Well, I think it was said at the last meeting that there was, you did tell Jason that something, there was an issue with it and we didn't know anything about that either. So we do have some communication issues.
Well, we might consider and I don't know what it would cause, but if Tim really don't want to do it, it's contracting the grass part and the upkeep out. Unless, I'm not saying you don't want to do it. But I, I, I'm just throwing that out there.
When I took, I took it over. The only reason I took it over is because the previous person y'all had for two months had no idea, one, what equipment y'all had. Two, what they were even responsible for cutting. So my process was to document and learn that process so that way we could pass it off to somebody who actually wanted it. Because, um, I can't remember her name, Dixie, I think was who it was. Y'all hired her to do it and she agreed, but she had no idea that she would be responsible for taking the lawnmower over here behind city hall. She had no idea the entire behind city hall was her to responsible to mow and upkeep. Um, so it's more than just grass cutting though. Um, the whole third of that contract is you're getting up to four o'clock during baseball season, four days a week, getting up there to chop the fields, drag the fields. After the games are over, you're dragging the fields and making sure they're flat because if it rains, you're just rutting up the fields and they can't play tomorrow. So there's a lot more to it than just that. And looking at the quote that y'all got before, it, it looks like it's five hundred dollars just for shady grass.
And I don't, I didn't even look at the ballpark part of it at all.
Go ahead and find some equipment. I mean, if he's, if he's gonna continue to do it, that's it. I'm not gonna do it. I mean, you're gonna have to buy drapes. You're gonna have to buy rakes. You're gonna have to buy lawnmowers. I mean, well, we've trailer, you go, I mean, they, they stuff that the, the city don't, we either gonna do it or they're gonna shut it down.
Well, now I'm on side A.
And I'm too much for the kids to shut something down like that.
No, we gotta let it go. But I had a thirty-inch snapper that I put that grass at sports place with and did the whole thing when I was volunteering to do the rec department. A thirty-inch home yard, not commercial snapper. It took a long time. But it, and it was old, y'all. It was twenty years old when I inherited it. So I'm just saying. But I, it can be done. I know it's just right now. The problem is.
Do we, do we have a maintenance plan for our equipment?
We need to go back and, and, Chad, before you come, it's been discussed, who knows? The city talking about getting a gator, you know, because he uses four, a drag the field. And the thing is, four ain't designed to drag the field. Gators are, they got proper equipment to drag the field and that's why I think there are draggers here or homemade dragger, you know, all that stuff is. And you want to like, perhaps the city needs, you know, eventually we just can't go without all. We know that, but we need, that's why we include that bill, you know, but, uh, it ain't just Timothy's lawnmower. Uh, if that lawnmower's twenty-something years old, the one Jason's using is the same age.
Now with the rain we just got, have you checked over there? Is that, is that building flooded?
Which building?
Over there it's flooded.
It's not. It, it gets hairy back there, but it has yet to flood. Uh, they, that, that has. And there's nothing on the floor. There really isn't nothing on the floor that we have to worry about other than maybe some, uh, ant poison. That's the only thing that would be ruined if it did flood because we got a bag of ant poison on the ground. But everything else is, uh, metal rakes and the lawnmower tires and the dragger tires. So it would, it would have to get a good three foot in and report with damage or something.
We'll be back.
Well, but part we were talking about the rec part of the budget though, is that we want to increase, we need to increase our revenue. We need to figure out what it's gonna, not that we're trying to make money off the kids, but we don't want to be going in the hole on, on the kids as well. We want them to have a really good program without the city losing money.
Well, the more money that we can bring in, the more we can do for them.
Yeah. I noticed you post, I think it was you that posted about Walsall having soccer.
Walsall just really soccer.
Yeah. So, I mean.
Soccer was, we could, they're, they're willing to do it because they got, that is the last grant. Um, you're looking at eight grand, ten grands of soccer because the goals by themselves are about three or four thousand dollars a piece. Um, and that's the most expensive part. So if, if we could secure a, a grain, it'd be another story, but, and we looked into it. We just, we couldn't afford it.
Yeah. And I thought it was too late for this year. We did, we used to have soccer goals and whatnot, but then they, they, nobody tried to push the program.
The thought was the, I believe the, the Washington County property over behind the ambulance has two soccer structures, but they have no netting to them. So we was, still had to spend a thousand dollar piece for netting them. If I remember correctly on that, because it was, it was pretty expensive.
I just thought over there too. There's about that much water in that field.
At the behind name. Behind name I think.
Well, that's gonna be anywhere even in Chipley. I know our boys had to go to Chipley to play soccer when they were young because we're in that half program, but that field's gonna be the same way in Chipley. Nobody's gonna practice till it draws out.
And I think last year we added about ten to the budget in order to secure a gator. And of course that fell through because we could never find one for a reasonable price with the warranty that was required. Um, so, um, I believe we got room to move ten grand back out to help with the current situation or whatever it is. I don't know if y'all, are y'all talking about next year's or this year?
Yeah, we're talking about the future, the future budget.
So I think there's ten in there for that, so.
It's probably under contingency, but we don't have an itemized contingency list.
Um, raising more money, I mean, concession stands and registrations really are, and sponsorships are our really big, uh, is our biggest moneymaker. So it would be a increase in registration price and an increase in concession stand price to raise more money.
I think, like y'all were talking the other night, increasing the, um, sign up cost is especially if we're providing a uniform. I mean, we paid thirty-five dollars sixteen, sixteen years ago and had to buy part of the uniform. So when I was involved in it a hundred years ago, the football, uh, was eighty dollars a child and cheer was one twenty-five.
And that covered the uniforms, registration and all of that. And that's been a hundred years ago. So I can see where there's a need to raise, uh, what is it now? Thirty-five and fifty?
This, this last one, the current, um, actual registration price was eighty and eighty-five, I think. But we started at fifty and sixty, early registration.
Okay. And do you, you keep the cheer uniforms and the football jerseys, right?
In the past, we kept, we did not keep the cheering uniforms because cheer fundraised for their uniforms. Um, we have, it's been back and forth. Since I've been involved, yet, there, there's been times where yes, we kept the cheering uniform. And then there was a time where they fundraised for, paid them, so they kept them. And that was there. But the other, the other cost savings that we did there is we, we've been talking about getting away from, everybody gets a trophy. And then they get some sort of, they get to keep their, uh, their uniform. Like they got the baseball jersey, um, as a, that is your memorabilia moment. Instead of everybody getting a four, five, six dollar trophy of her. And I would say like right now, y'all approved a twelve hundred dollars for baseball jersey, uh, jerseys this year. So that's saving twelve hundred dollars just for that one sport.
Was there banquet issue for that?
We didn't do that. It, it fell apart. Everything was going on. There wasn't a weekend, free weekend. It just.
Well, I, I was just saying, back when I was involved, it's a, it's a football. And the jerseys were matched with return.
They were returned.
They were kept. And that way you only, you order, you had to from the new team from year to year. So you weren't having to order brand new every year. The cheerleaders are paid one twenty-five, get, got to keep their uniforms, bag, e- everything. But reg just didn't make the money off that because it wasn't costing that much without the child.
Right.
So I, I don't know, maybe you or us, somebody needs to look at raising.
I actually just started to get the registration for basketball and I went up, I was, uh, going to do thirty dollar, it was twenty, thirty last year, twenty registration, uh, uh, early registration. And then thirty dollars regular registration. I just went up to thirty, forty, um, just to get them, the registration created. So we're at a point now where we can go up on basketball. Basketball is almost, I think we had, I had to look to make sure, but I'm pretty sure we had the same numbers in basketball as we did baseball and softball this year. And baseball and softball has always been our big, big number.
And I know we've discussed this before too, but utilizing tri-county early will help a lot of families and they, they pay full price for whatever sport it is. And it's the paperwork is very easy to do. I mean, we do it all the time. The only thing is you have to advertise early and get all that information out there for anyone that was late registration or having to wait on the check.
That's, to be honest with you, that's our biggest problem is everybody wants to wait until late registration. And that's why we tried to do the early registration and bring the price and show them that you're giving ten, fifteen, twenty, thirty dollars discount. And it just, it hasn't seemed to matter. Everybody wants to wait until it's not even regular registration. It's late. We've already should have closed and that, that's when they're registering. So, so by the time you do the tri-county, which that's still something I've got to learn. I've, I've been trying, I'm still, I got, I haven't said it to y'all, but I've been talking is it's a learning curve. Trying to pick up all the little pieces of this program and trying to learn it all as you go. And that's one of the ones is tri-county. I do not, I don't have that process down yet.
I've got a contact number for you that I'll give you. Of Lisa Davis. She works there.
Ms. Lisa, yeah.
She's actually a relative. And, and she can tell you all about that. She can even provide you with the form so you'll have it on hand and you can hand them out. Or, or have them at city hall. People can pick up or whatever. And she can tell you what they have to have and or when they turn it in. As I say, it's a simple process and it'll help a lot of, a lot of children. And it's, you know, if they're discreet, so it's not like it's gonna be an embarrassment, you know, to the parent.
It could benefit a hundred percent of the kids that play.
Absolutely. Well, and not only that, and a lot of people don't know this, but it's not just city rec that tri-county helps. They help elementary schools. They help middle school. They help high school with whatever sport it is that they need. If they need gloves, if they need cleats, if they need cheer.
But they may not do more than once a year.
I, I believe it's, um.
Two.
Two.
Okay. I'm not sure, but.
Yeah.
Can I ask a question? Why not just, I don't know if you do online or physical form, but why not just attach a copy of the tri-county to every form? Then that way.
Well, that's another tip if you do.
Then everybody has one if they need it.
We're trying to push the online. Um, so whenever I call or I'll see if there's an online process.
Maybe link to it so they can print it or submit it to tri-county.
They, they help a lot, but a lot of people don't know about it. And so, I mean, they're, they're always, you know, fishing it or telling me, hey, you know, anybody that wants to do that. It's a really big help with me and they help all of Washington counties.
That's great.
All right. Y'all been staring at paperwork. Anybody got anything to say? That good, huh?
Oh, I do have something to, to say, which I guess we'll talk about more tomorrow night, but it'll pertain to the future finances. Um, Becky and I have talked to the, um, county about a program that is, um, a grant that is, first of all, we don't have to match it. And we don't have to put the money out front. They provide the, it's a, it's not a county grant, but it's anyway.
It's state.
Yes, it's state grant. But they provide the money upfront. It's very liberal on their expectations. It's to basically bring jobs to the community type grant. I've got to make a phone call tomorrow. I couldn't today, um, to find out for sure if we can proceed because we've got to have somebody that's gonna provide those jobs. Uh, we do have the RV park coming in. That would be a possibility for that, but we need to speak to them and to see if they will commit. If they do, it would fund us for putting water and sewer all the way out there to them. Which would not only bring jobs to the area, but also increase the revenue with the water and sewer lines going out there. And we don't have to put anything out.
It won't cost us anything.
Nothing. We don't have to pay it upfront and wait to get reimbursed.
Best they would wish they knew, they have known this before.
This is just.
Because they just gave ten thousand dollars and they didn't know.
Well, but if we did some, but they don't have soup. I mean, but that was probably their water well.
Okay. Just a second thing now, just to get started. I said, what did you count it? Ten thousand dollars.
And they may not be interested. We've got to talk to them and they wouldn't need to commit, you know, to doing it. Um, but they could use that water, though the well could be for the pool. It could be agricultural. They wouldn't have to, just their individual, you know, their individual RVs or camp sites then would have their own, each one would have their own water bill. So if that wells were up, it wouldn't be, oh, we gotta spend five thousand dollars right now getting it fixed.
Well, and all of that, but there's, there's another one going right across the street.
Yes.
And what that would do, i- if, if it's something the council wanted to do, like Candace said, it's gotta be submitted by September the thirtieth. But all the properties in between here and there.
Where's the start of that?
To.
It's, um, going south of Vernon on seventy-nine. Do you know where Jimmy Cookie still is out there?
Right before you get to Penning Breach.
Right before you get to where?
Right before you get to Penning Breach.
On the right.
Well, it's on the right. It's a, it's, it's two a little bit.
I was just wondering if you were talking about the one in New Hope, but I was thinking that's a lot.
No, 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 no. It's.
It's a lot of customers.
It's gonna be pasture for the winery on that.
But the properties in between, you know, a lot of them are for sale. Um, it's, we want to bring business in. We want to bring people in and, you know, there, there's no housing here right now. People can't find a place to stay here. But there's an opportunity with this to, you know, have people come to.
To go a different direction. This has just been the beginning of this grant, but then we could reapply again because there's not a limit, so to speak, and go i- if, if there was other, if there was a developer that wanted to come in and build houses and we could say, yes, we can provide the water and sewer. Because we have the capacity at the plant to provide the water and sewer. Because Chipley doesn't have enough housing either. They don't have places to build housing.
And I think they have capacity.
I mean.
Well, and, and not only that, but, um, from what I understood from the meeting, if, if that happens, like she said, and the developer comes in, then there could be some negotiation there for the water and sewer part of it would be turned over to the city, would be signed over to the city. And all, we would get all of that revenue. And there again, we're not having to match grant. We're not having to come up with anything upfront.
And that's what I was extending this in.
We don't have to extend this in the, to do the grant.
And we don't have to end it.
As long as we're providing utility.
Fallow pays, but there's a lot of hazards all the way to Desert Valley.
Yeah, exactly.
And that's in the Washington, yeah.
And it's in Washington County. So as long as we're providing utility. And that goes back to, to the franchise fee. And then we've got a, if we, let's just say they spent the ten thousand dollars, but we really want to try to get them to go with this program because we have to have a job potent, growth potential to be able to, to get the grant. Then we could maybe waive.
Waive their fees.
Uh, a fee to get them to commit to doing it. So, um.
I'm having them talk to me. I'm, I'm, but I'm a teenager.
They should be going in here, uh, trying to get it to happen.
Yeah.
They called to get me the other day and they had surveyors out there, planning surveyors out there.
I know that, well, they said they sold that property.
What, I, I'm, which are we talking?
We don't know the name of the company.
Barrett says that property is sold.
Yeah, it's sold.
On, on the board?
Yes. Three edge, almost three.
His mama's place.
The house and all there. So there's a business wanting to go in there?
Yes, ma'am. They'll be getting up with us directly on some other, us.
So that's the second one you were discussing.
And I didn't know it was a business. Barrett just told us that it's, they sold.
They've been coming, um, forwards and backwards, boom, and everything like that goes directly to change the land to commercial.
Which is shit already. Mine's listed.
But they're, they're doing the.
Commercial lot, well, but the ball property across the street is.
It's across the street, but I believe on this side, part of it is, part of this is, um.
Part of it's residential.
Residential. So they want to put it all in one piece.
Starting to itch, y'all.
And the planning surveyors were out there yesterday to. And the planning surveyors were out there yesterday to plan, maybe the building design or something like that.
Well, and, and, and we knew any opportunity that we were gonna have is gonna start with this highway spin. We're, we're getting close, and people are looking. So the more that we can offer, the better off we're gonna be.
And we can't offer it without grants.
No, and while we have the opportunity of these grants, in my opinion, we need to utilize them any way we can.
And if we bring in 50 houses, let's just say in the next five years, those 50 houses that are workers and new men are gonna have kids. Those kids are gonna wanna play on the city league. And we need some really well-developed plans. Stick with it, come up with something every month. I mean, I know that might not be what all you signed up for, but we really need to get, you know, we really need to get into this to provide a good community for our kids. Because right now, our kids, if they're not on the city, if there's not a city league sport going at the time, are playing basketball on the corner down here, and that is it. Or they're playing video games.
And, and the more people that come in here, the more, the more money's gonna be spent at, at city businesses, and the more, it's gonna help all the way around.
And the restaurants and everything. So anyway, I know we swayed, but it does go towards the budget. So I wanted to add that to the meeting tomorrow night because I'm, I will need approval to get Dale Long to give us props, you know, have the engineer look at this for the grant. So we would have to spend the money to have the engineer do that, which he's done it. Every time we have a grant, he has to go in and, and do that.
But that cost is.
It's very minimal compared to the.
The money that we, we can get out of this. And again, this isn't the only time that we can use this. From what we were told, we can come back, like she said, if a developer comes in, which it's my understanding that some people are looking at property now. If they come in, we can kind of turn around and come back and say, hey, we're gonna run water and sewer another way. And they'll help us do that as long as it's job day.
This same engineer that we need to look at this.
The one we need Dale Long.
That's a building I need.
Well, now, he, he's, he's the one that said he'd go trace the information for, uh, for that kind of engineer. Yeah, so she, has she found anything?
I've been.
You've been working on that?
I've worked, I have a roof, I have a roof coming tomorrow.
What about the pole?
The inside of it, I'm, I'm waiting on the estimate to come back. Um, it's a very major job, and.
It's a little bit cross.
But I do have a, um, somebody, I'm waiting on the, and he, he said it's gonna take him a little while to get together. But I have one roof estimate out already, and I'm waiting for a second. I should have that.
Awesome.
The painting's good.
Okay, the paint job. Okay, so where are we at, y'all? Are we at a point with this budget that we're gonna finish the vote, or what, where are we gonna be? No, I'm talking about at the, at our meeting, what, where we say, we get on the seven.
We, we can vote on it, or y'all can vote on it next Tuesday, not meeting.
I'm gonna say, that's what I'm saying.
Or they'll have the first reading of the budget, because I think that's what you have to do first.
Well, and that's what Tracy told us, that we needed to be where we were gonna be by the seven.
But do y'all want to consider, I don't wanna be the bad guy, but I'm gonna say it anyway. Do y'all want to consider her adding in, I'm sorry, I'm dizzy, but doing this thing here. Adding in, uh, franchise fees or raising the utility tax?
Until the taxes at 70% right now, we're allowed to raise the.
Raise it to 10. Y'all, y'all understand that that's not the same thing as raising water and sewer.
Correct.
Chipley's is 10, water phase is 10.
I say we, we put a vote on it. I mean, if it's gon, if it's gonna help us.
It won't be a lot in this.
Next year.
Uh, no, we gotta figure out where we're gonna come up with $61,000 for next year.
That's what I'm saying. But this isn't raising the, the, a- and I have no desire to raise the water and sewer rates myself. But this isn't doing that. That, this is raising the tax.
The utility tax on the water.
And everybody else around us, it's my understanding, is at 10, and we are at 7 and have here.
So we haven't done any inflation in years and years on it.
So.
And then the franchise fee would be the same?
I don't. I say franchise fee and that on, and let's discuss that meeting.
So.
The thing is, it's got to be done on today.
Right. Well, y'all gotta say, hey, have her do the franchise fee so that it can be read at the.
Yes.
Yeah.
I'm in.
Chad, you got a problem?
I don't have a problem. I don't have a problem. You gotta find some money somewhere.
We gotta do what we gotta do.
Yeah.
Is she working from home? Are you gonna do this? She said, she said, I messaged her to find out if she got tested, and she said she was too, didn't have enough energy to go get tested.
She's gonna have to help me because.
So I told her to have Danny load her up, go get her work on tomorrow.
We'll probably do it by telephone. I'll do, uh, Michelle, like she did tonight, she just, I, because I have to go in her.
Yeah.
Okay, so we're, we're on board for the franchise fee and the tax. And we discussed this before at one of the other budget workshops, but we, we all are aware that we're gonna have to either start discussing some of this in, in our regular meetings or have an extra special meeting occasionally or workshop to make sure that we're not in this position again. We discussed that before, and so I just wanted to reiterate that. We don't need to let this slip by. We're waiting to say anything next year. All right, with that meeting said, does anybody else have anything?
I have a message to drum. What's your name, John?
Uh, sir.
Colin Page. Meeting.